Okay, go ahead Kevin.
Okay, thank you Laura. I'd like to call the May 24th, 2021 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye. Are here.
Mr. Scrubutinis is excused. Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Mr. Darpinno.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield is excused. Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Okay, we have no minutes ready for tonight. I know we had a last meeting was quite extensive, so we'll probably have those available our next meeting for approval. And I'll move right to the public hearings. We have two public hearings for tonight. First public hearing being 509 Fillmore Ave. That's application for approval of a plot plan for a three lot minor subdivision. Mr. Henry, would you please read that notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 187-7 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna and the applicable provisions of New York Town Law, Section 276, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna by video conference on the 24th day of May, 2021, at 7:00 PM to consider an application from Ronald Martel for a minor subdivision application in the Town of Niskiuna at 509, 517, and 537 Fillmore Ave. The property is located within the R2 Medium Density Zoning District. A copy of the minor subdivision proposal will be available for inspection at the Town website under the News and Announcement tab and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. To participate in the public hearing by video conference, a link is available. To join the public hearing by telephone, dial 1406-851-5233 and enter PIN 275-880110. If you are unable to participate electronically or by telephone but would like to submit a comment to be read during the public hearing, please email your comment to lrobertson@niskiuna.org by 4:00 PM on May 24th, 2021. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, Kevin A. Walsh, Chairman, Planning Board and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. Do we have Mr. Martel or representative of the applicant online tonight?
I'm here, Dave Kimmer from ABD Engineers, representing Mr. Martel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimmer. And Laura, were you planning on, were you gonna pull up the map or what was in the notice, the public notice?
Yeah, if you want to pull up the map while you're talking, that's okay David.
And Mr. Kimmer, if you just want to give just a brief overview for the public, then we'll open it up to the public, okay?
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry Laura, did you want me to share my screen?
Oh, if you can, go ahead, otherwise I will pull it up, totally up to you.
Oh, you can, you can do it.
Laura does it a lot, so.
Yeah. I saw you guys and made that nice little sketch, pretty much sums it up.
Yep.
So you've got four existing lots on Fillmore Avenue. They're also kind of bordering these two paper streets at this largely somewhat undeveloped subdivision. Three of the lots are owned by Mr. Martel. One of the lots is gonna be purchased from the town by Mr. Martel. And essentially, the lots are just gonna be reconfigured from four lots into three lots, like so. There's no new construction proposed. That's pretty much all there is to it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Kimmer. And I'll just note for the public's information, there are no area variances are required to accomplish this reconsolidation or redistribution of space. So do we have anyone online wishing to be heard for the public hearing regarding 509 Fillmore Avenue? Anyone online? Laura, did we receive any emails or letters regarding 509 Fillmore?
I did not receive any comments on Fillmore.
Okay. Okay, now do a last call for anyone online for 509 Fillmore wishing to be heard for the public hearing. Hearing, you're seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing for 509 Fillmore, thank you. We have another public hearing, next public hearing is One Research Circle, it's a site plan application and special use permit for an antenna on the water tower at GE Global Research. And I believe we have Mr. Brennan online, I know we also have Ms. Coleman, both representing the applicant. Mr. Brennan, did you want to just give a high level overview, a quick overview of the project for the public before we open it up?
Yes, please. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I don't see that my camera looks like it's on, though. So, good evening, my name is Dave Brennan with the law firm of Young Summer, representing Verizon Wireless. This evening, we're in front of the Planning Board on an application by Verizon Wireless to co-locate three sets of antenna arrays on the existing water tank located at the G E R and D Center at One Research Circle, right off of River Road. That's a 207-foot tall existing water tank. We're proposing to hang antennas on three of the legs at the 160-foot level, as well as two sets of antennas at the 70-foot high level. And from our understanding, this water tank has not previously been used as a wireless facility, and for that reason, we need both site plan approval by the Planning Board and a special use permit from the Town Board. And we're starting this process in front of the Planning Board to move that forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brennan. And just again, and for the public, the area of coverage that's gonna be improved as a result of this wireless antenna, I believe there's a map, I don't know if you want to pull it up Laura, or you just state, yeah, there it is. Basically, it's like from Lot 7 up to, I guess would be the park, soccer fields, across the river, Rexford area, down to about the Mohawk River Golf Course, somewhere in that area. So that's kind of like the areas that will be covered as a result of this application if it were to be approved. All right? Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Brennan. So we have the public hearing for One Research Center, One Research Circle for the cell tower at Global Research. Do we have anyone online wishing to be heard regarding this application? Do we have any emails or letters Laura, regarding the public hearing?
No, I did get a couple people come into the office that wanted to look at the plans, but no one formally submitted a comment or complained about it after they saw it.
Okay. Or had good things to say, of course. So is there anyone, again, one more time, anyone online wishing to be heard regarding the public hearing for One Research Circle? Okay? Hearing, you're seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing for One Research Circle, thank you very much. And we'll move on to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town of Niskiuna, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say. Is there anyone online wishing to be heard under privilege of the floor? Okay? Again Laura, have you received any communication for privilege of the floor?
No communication or comments.
Okay. Last time, anyone wishing to be heard for privilege of the floor? Hearing, you're seeing none, we'll close, privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're gonna move right to new business. But our new business, we have one resolution, excuse me, that's Resolution 2021-20, it's a resolution for approval of permanent and temporary signage at 436 Balltown Road, which is the Burlington store. And I'll summarize that resolution, which was posted to the Town website. Now therefore, be resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has determined that the proposed waiver for signage would have a minimum negative effect on aesthetics and is compatible with existing façades within the commercial shopping center, and does hereby grant said waivers as outlined above, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the proposed temporary and permanent signage on the property located at 436 Balltown Road, as shown in a seven-page drawing set entitled "Go Package Connected in New York Store Number 1295, May 10, 2021, Mohawk Commons, 436 Balltown Roads Connected in New York 12304," created by Blair Sign Programs and dated December 30th, 2020, with a most recent revision date of 5/10/21, in a ten-page drawing set entitled "Exterior Sign Planning Submittal, Connected in New York Store Number 1295, May 10, 2021, Mohawk Commons, 436 Balltown Roads, Connected in New York 12304," created by Blair Sign Programs and dated 2/3/21, with a most recent revision of 5/10/21. In conjunction with said waivers meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan. And just to summarize, the waivers are basically for the color for the corporate logo, a waiver for the red color, because neutral and earth tones are what are allowed in that zoning district, and that's a corporate identity, the red. There's some temporary signage, some banners that would, where this resolution will allow those for up to nine months, and some four temporary stake signs, also for nine months. Also, on the west, front of the building, on the facade, there's an additional 128-square-foot waiver to allow for that signage as proposed, and a small logo sign on the front, which is considered an additional sign, so there's a waiver for that. And then also 11-square-foot variance for the signage on the north, additional 11-square-foot variance for the signage on the north facade. So those are summary of the variances that we're gonna grant. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Move by Mr. Oster for approval, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Laflamme, thank you. Any discussion? We do have the applicant, Mr. Herrera, online, there he is.
Yes, I actually reviewed the document, and I did not see where it was mentioned about tenant panels overlays. I know that that was discussed, and it was no issue at all, it was the little small corner signs that go on the pylon sign?
They don't need a waiver, they're approved.
Okay, cool, just wanted to confirm that.
I think the key thing here is you reduce the square footage of the request, and we're granting those waivers.
Correct.
We didn't, we didn't want the pallet signs, and we reduced the number of stake signs to four.
Yes, correct.
And that's what we're approving tonight. Do you have any other questions or comments, Mr. Herrera?
No, that's fine, everything's good.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Sorry Kevin, I'm just double, I'm just double checking with Paul Briggs about the GE public hearing, because we forgot to read the notice. You just texted my message, but did you, did you make sure that you mentioned that the applicant still shows 16 stake signs on the plan, but the waiver is prepared, only allows for four stake signs?
I did not mention.
Laura, the applicant, late this afternoon, he provided a drawing with four stake signs.
Okay. So that's probably not referenced in the resolution, which is why I highlighted in bold that it would have to be submitted that way for a building, but if we have a drawing that shows the four stake signs, that's even better.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, and if, Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll regarding 436 Balltown Road?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Darpinno.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution for waivers at Burlington store is approved. Mr. Herrera, do you have any questions? We're not under discussion tonight, do you have anything else?
I know, yeah, everything is clear, thank you for the help, appreciate it.
And it's my understanding now you'll be able to come in to get the building permit, right Laura?
Correct.
And if there's any discrepancies or concerns, with clarifications, it'll be addressed in the building permit process, so we should be okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herrera. And good luck to the store, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And Laura, or Mr. Briggs, regarding the public hearing for the cell tower, do we need to read that notice and go step back a minute, or are we okay? I apologize.
Yes. I would read it again, Kevin.
Okay. All right, we'll step back for a moment there, everyone, I'm sorry about that, I forgot to ask, Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry, would you please read the notice for the public hearing for One Research Circle?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 220-43 and 220-59 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna and the applicable provisions of the New York Town Law, Section 276, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna by video conference on the 24th day of May, 2021, at 7:00 PM to consider an application from David Brennan of Young Summer LLC, representing Verizon Wireless, on behalf of the General Electric Company, for site plan review and special use permit in the Town of Niskiuna. The property is located within the IR Research and Development Zoning District. A copy of the site plan and special use permit application will be available for inspection at the Town website under the News and Announcement tab and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. To participate in the public hearing by video conference, a link is available. To join the public hearing by telephone, dial 1406-851-5233 and enter PIN 275-880110. If you are unable to participate electronically or by telephone but would like to submit a comment to be read during the public hearing, please email your comment to lrobertson@niskiuna.org by 4:00 PM on May 24th, 2021. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, Kevin A. Walsh, Chairman, Planning Board and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry, I'm sorry about that. Let me just ask the public, we already reviewed it, is there anyone online wishing to be heard regarding the public hearing for One Research Circle for the cell tower antenna, or, excuse me, for the antenna on the water tower at GE Global Research? Anyone wishing to be heard? Okay, and as you stated Laura, we have no letters or comments, so, hearing, you're seeing no one, we will close the public hearing again for One Research Circle, sorry about that. All right, thank you, and we'll be talking more about that in a moment. All right, that brings us back down to discussion items. First up under discussion is 509 Fillmore, the three lot subdivision. Mr. Oster's the project lead, and we have, I believe, we have the engineer of the applicant. Mr. Kimmer's online, so what's next?
I mean, I see it saying that the applicant, the town attorney, have actually negotiated, have actually come to an agreement?
Yeah, big question for Mr. Briggs, are we all?
And then I have a sequencing question, too.
Yep.
I don't know if Paul's not able to unmute, but yes, he definitely came to an agreement. The question is whether or not it'll be on the Town Board for this meeting or in a month. I don't know if him and Elena were able to squeeze it on, or if we have to push it to June, but for sure, it's moving forward, and Paul's been working on it.
And then, but in terms of our own action, do we need to wait for the Town Board actually approve that before this board can take action, recognizing that it's based upon that property being transferred?
No, the board, the board can, this board can take action subject to that.
Right.
Okay. And then I did also noted as well that there was a note in, when the CAC approved, or, you know, given negative declaration for the, or negative, you know, they recommended negative declaration, that they had a suggestion about growing more trees on the property, and I don't know, is that a, is that something that could be captured within a resolution?
I think there was a generic note, actually, they definitely said it, so I included it. But there's really no clear tree clearing, like, associated with the subdivision.
Yeah.
There was, we haven't been able to ask the applicant if they had any future plans for the rear of Lot 2.
Now, that's something, Mr. Kimmer, you can address with the applicant, you just want to know the future plans and whether we need to be concerned about another future subdivision of that lot, because it's a good size in the, it was a R2 zoning district.
Um, I'm not sure, I don't think so, and, you know, obviously, they'd have to come back if they wanted to.
Right. Or we can condition it somehow that we won't, that we're not interested in another subdivision there, right Laura, or Mr. Briggs? We talked about doing that also.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely put a note in there, I didn't, I don't know if you want to go so far as a deed restriction, if a road was ever to be built there, it would affect a lot of properties, it's highly unlikely. And like, as far as like a serial subdivision concern, this is taking four lots and making it three, even though we're treating it as a subdivision. So if it did break out one lot in the future, it would still actually be under the minor subdivision approval, so those are just little nuggets for you to think about.
So there's only one more possible property that could be built on it theoretically?
Without demolishing existing structures, that's true.
Okay, so we're at the point that I think we can call for a resolution in the next meeting? We should be able to, and then, you know, and it'll be, you know, whatever condition or wording, that would include, you know, the transfer of land from the town to the applicant, and that's, shouldn't be an issue. Everybody okay with that, or any concerns or comments? No? Okay. All right, so we'll have a resolution prepared for our next meeting to complete this three lot minor subdivision process.
Okay, I did want to just mention to you, Dave Kimmer, that the planning department will probably have some comments, like minor comments on the subdivision for you to add, like the general minor subdivision, it's in a place for the chairman to sign, and maybe some bolding of the lines, because Clark did the highlighting, but I think you want to make sure that it's clear in perpetuity really what's happening.
Yeah, I actually kind of fixed it up a little bit.
Okay.
It's not, you guys haven't seen it yet, I mean, I could show you now, but I think it's a little bit more clear. And, you know, I've added all the standard notes and everything, so, should be good.
Okay, great, so if you can send the updated one over to me and Clark, then we won't comment on the old one, send us the new one, and then we'll just double check that for final resolution on the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
And obviously, we'll utilize that one for the resolution, you know, reference that in the resolution. Okay?
Yep.
Any questions, Mr. Kimmer, or anybody on the board?
I'm all set, thanks.
All right, thank you, everyone, thank you, Mr. Kimmer, have a good night.
You too.
All right. Okay, and that brings us to One Research Circle, and we won't do the public hearing again. Site plan application, special use permit for the antenna on a water tower. And Mr. Laflamme has agreed to be the project lead on this one. So obviously, we haven't heard anything from the public. I don't, Mr. Laflamme or Mr. Brennan, anything especially you'd like to talk about at this point in time?
Kevin, no, I, we've been, the town's been through this a couple times, you know, the past couple of years, and I know that the theoretical coverage that we had proposed with some of the other towers might not match the field coverage, right? So, Mr. Brennan, I was just gonna ask if, if that's in part why this application's in, just to cover areas that were literally missed, or is it to just enhance and give even stronger singles to this section of Niskiuna?
Sure, I believe that this is an existing area where we don't have good coverage, and I believe it was shown when we were before this board for the project at, I always want to call it the bus garage, I apologize, but on the, on the highway garage, that this was gonna be an area of existing coverage that we needed to improve, so it's to supplement the existing coverage. We were looking at, on both sides of the river, and, you know, this water tank presents an optimal solution where we don't need to build a new tower, and that's why we're proposing it.
Excellent. Kevin, the other question I had just was to confirm that, I know that you represent Verizon, but if there were additional co-location requests, would the tower be able to support additional carriers and/or growth by Verizon?
My understanding is the, the water tank has sufficient capacity for additional carriers, and I believe that AT&amp;T is looking at it as well, I'm not obviously familiar with their exact plans, but I do expect that it'll be a platform, hopefully, for another carrier in the near future.
All right, great.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brennan. Obviously, this is a kind of cell tower, or cell antenna application that we like, since it's an existing structure, sits pretty far off the road on this side of the river, so visually, minimal impact, so it's all good. And as you, as you all see, that's like for the public hearing, we didn't have any concerns brought forth. So based on no concerns being brought forth, and, you know, doing the right things, utilizing existing structure, I think we can call for resolution also for the next meeting, make a recommendation to the Town Board, so that they can move forward with the process, you know, because they need to also hold a public hearing, and issue the special use permit so they can come back to us for final site plan. Is anybody having concerns with that, Mr. Laflamme, we, all good?
I don't, Kevin.
Yep, and the planning office is ready to support that, of course?
Yeah, we can support that, just to Chris's point, I think that like on the WTRY Tower, we had put in a condition of recommendation that if other antennas were to go up, they would just be through building permit, because like once it's kind of selected and okayed for antennas, I don't think it makes sense for every single company to have to do a special use permit. So my one suggestion would be that we include similar condition to what we had on WTRY Road.
That's great, Laura. And I assume that if, you know, AT&amp;T were to come forward, they would have to coordinate with Verizon anyway, to make sure they don't impact each other from a, you know, electrical standpoint or physical standpoint. So I would assume that GE Global would notify Verizon or whatever contract that they have with Verizon, if there was an occurrence.
Correct, yes.
Yep, okay, good. All right, so we'll have a resolution prepared for the next meeting, making a positive recommendation to the Town Board, the special use permit for cell antenna at the GE Water Tower.
Would you like to comment?
Sure.
You can hear me, that's good. I was just gonna mention that I did look at the tower, I think the addition of one or more of these cell antennas is going to be minimal visual impact, actually, the solar array has a much larger impact on the sightlines and all.
Yeah, no, thank you, Leslie, and I think, I'll speak for Mr. Khan here, Mr. Khan was recusing himself, I'm sorry, Mr. Khan, on this project.
No, that's fine, I was gonna bring it up at the end, I didn't want to disturb the flow of the conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Khan, and Ms. Gold will be sitting in on this project, representing the Planning Board on his behalf throughout this process. Thank you, Mr. Khan, thank you, Mr. Brennan, any other questions for the applicant or comments regarding this project?
If, for the public's benefit, is, does this, Mr. Brennan, is this really just positioned for better coverage of standard 4G, or does this help with a future installation of 5G in Niskiuna?
I would say it would be both. Right now, it's primarily designed to supplement the existing 4G coverage in town, but the Town Board of the Town of Niskiuna did sign an agreement to allow 4G antennas on certain facilities in the right of way, and I understand that that's slowly but surely moving forward, so I would say that this would also be a platform to also supplement 5G coverage in the somewhat near future.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you. Anything else on this subject?
No, I'll see you at the next meeting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, all right, and we'll move on. Next up, we have, under discussion, we have 2538 River Road, and that's Kelts Farm, a major subdivision, and this is just to talk about where we stand in open items that we have, and I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Darpinno or Mr. McPartlin.
I can give the update.
Okay.
So Joel had reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers, and they did the review, there is an additional culvert that they're gonna be adding to span over the wetlands area, which was part of the open discussion at the last meeting, we had talked about. He did receive that letter from the DEC allowing him to move forward, so this will be included in his latest package of information. At the last meeting, he also spoke about modifying two of the resolutions, which I think everyone was in agreement were beneficial items to add. And then the last item, I believe that's still in the developer's court, is to fully respond to all of the remaining open items in the TDE's letter.
Correct. And those were two conditions that the applicant recommended an update to, but we're, and I'll let Laura speak here, but what we're waiting on is for the Town Highway Superintendent and Water and Soil Engineering Supervisor to ensure that they're in agreement with those two conditions, so we can move forward on any update of the conditions.
Yeah, I was trying to schedule a meeting with Joel, the superintendent, Highway Superintendent of Engineering, just to go over the conditions and make sure we're all on the same page before we do any modifications to the resolutions. And Joel is going to, I think, just at least zoom in on the Windsor Drive stub and send me a copy of that. so we can mark up like a landscaping plan there. And then also the tree council walked the site with him, so I know that was a condition in the original resolution as well. And as far as setting the bike path, they wanted him to avoid a sugar maple, which he thinks he can do, so he's hopefully tagged that now so that it doesn't get cleared. And try and save like a little grove of hemlocks to between two of the houses by one of the wetlands. But I felt like, and then they're gonna give him, he was very minimal to any of the suggestions to the tree planting plan. So they did their site walk, they have some comments, and he will be updating the tree planting plan as well.
Any comments, Mr. Bazoin?
Just that we also needed the DEC water quality certificate that we received. And that's included in the pack, well, I don't think it's included in the package actually, but we did send that to the town. And like David said, we're only waiting on Advanced Engineering to finish up the SWIP comment. It's update the drawings to for construction, and to have GPI respond to the response. And Laura, I spoke to HMA today, and those hemlocks in that one big sugar maple, we agreed that I'm gonna mark them with pink ribbon so they don't touch them, so I'll probably do that tomorrow. But right now, we're just kind of waiting on, on Nick. And I kind of hope that we could schedule the pre-construction ASAP after, after we get the comments back from Advanced Engineering.
Alright. And so, do you have comments back, so we can schedule a pre-construction meeting, and then another additional meeting, it sounds like, or phone call or video conference with Superintendent Warsor and Engineering and the highway superintendent to clarify, you know, what actions are gonna be taken regarding the Windsor Drive reconfiguration at the end of the street there, and the sewer trunk line, if I recall correctly, right, Joel?
Right, that's correct. Laura said, you know, we met with the neighbors at the end of Windsor several times. You know, we met with the tree council, so I think everybody's kind of in agreement with what's gonna happen at the end of the street there.
Okay. Alright, well, so we'll look forward to, you know, having that meeting, so we can bring that to closure. And if we get agreement on the, on who's doing what for those two conditions, and if we need to revise the resolution to update those two conditions, we'll do so, Joel. But that shouldn't hold up, I don't know, I don't think it'll hold anything up, right? Still just need the comments, we can keep moving forward, right, Laura?
No, the ball's in our court right now.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, any other questions or comments for the applicant, or regarding this project at all, Kelts Farm, Dave, or Mr. McPartland?
Hey, I just wanted to say one thing, Kevin, too. I didn't chime in on the public hearing, but I have Verizon Wireless, and I am really looking forward to that tower going up, because Verizon service is kind of lacking, you know, at my house.
Hopefully it'll help. Alright, hearing nothing further regarding 2538 River Road, we'll close that subject. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll move on to 1330 Balltown Road. Thanks, Joel. 1330 Balltown Road, it's the CVS, and that's Mr. Khan's, the project lead. Now, I did see an email late in the day that the CVS's representative, I believe that's Ms. Lay, requested we table this.
Instead of doing it by email, I was gonna ask her what, I couldn't catch that from the email, what the reasoning was, so. Did she cite a reason?
She did not cite a reason. I, I know that they were, they, this is sort of the second time they started on this project. Like, the first time was a start, then we said, no, we have to declare that as a medical office. Then they withdrew for a bit, and then, and then we said, we can, you know, this is the process. They started it. But no, they didn't include a reason.
Okay. Yeah, the email kind of implied it was tabled for now, but I guess we'll see, you know. Main thing there is we still had some open items, and basically, he did the traffic analysis based on the engineer's handbook. We asked him to write that all down for us, along with how they're gonna handle waste, you know, which we all, you know, we discussed at the last meeting, we just wanted something written down, so we could pass it on to the town board to support the special use permit application. We have not received that, and we were asked to table. That's really all, that's, that's where we're at.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Khan. So there's nothing else further? Are there any questions, anybody on that? We just have to wait and see what happens, I guess, when they're ready to move forward again, and we'll pick it back up.
No, Paul Briggs, I'll follow up with an email the town board had.
We lost you, Laura, you're up.
Sorry, I'm happily talking away to myself. Paul Briggs, like, I'll send you an email, but the town board actually has a resolution on the meeting tomorrow calling for a public hearing, so obviously that would have to be tabled as well.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, CVS? Alright, we'll move forward. Next up is 1380 Van Antwerp Road, and that's a three lot minor subdivision. And Mr. Leese is online, and Mr. McPartland's the project lead. And I guess we got some things to talk about there, some updates. Can I go ahead, Mr. McPartland, or planning office?
Well, one, one big update here, as a result of a tree council site visit. We are abandoning the plan for a, a curb cut on McGovern Drive for the existing home in favor of maintaining the existing access to that lot on Van Antwerp. So what that means is a little less work, and we're able to save some mature trees, a little more asphalt potentially. But I, I think a lot of the plans, there's a version of the plans for this subdivision that basically satisfies the tree council, so I believe it's revision, revision number two. So that's the big, that's the big change. We, I believe the drainage analysis is actually based on that, that version, that did not involve the McGovern driveway. So, but, but less, less work to be done to finalize that analysis. I think if we haven't identified a TDE yet, or, or whether or not the town will be reviewing that, we'll have to identify who's, who's reviewing the drainage analysis. And as, as we've mentioned before, and I believe the applicant's preparing some elevation renderings, but the, the architectural review board is ready to review those at some point for the two new homes proposed on Hilltop Road.
Thank you, Mr. McPartland. And, you know, your additional thing I had in my notes was, you know, we had some discussion about the water line, appoint a tie-in, and I believe that's Mr. Leese's court to work with his engineering that determine, maybe, you know, make a recommendation to the town of where the tie-in would occur, so that they can get buy-in from a water and sewer superintendent on that also. So, I guess Laura, the ball is in the planning office, right? Whether town's gonna review it or words, town designated engineers, we can move this along?
Yeah, I reached out to the town design, sorry, town designated engineer to get a quote. A little bit of it is dependent on how they do the water line. So I know one of the proposals that Mr. Leese had said was move, moving the hydrant further along McGovern. That takes a little more TDE review than just a private service line out to Van Antwerp. But like with a little flexibility, he'll send the quote, and we can get it moving forward. I talked to Mr. Leese just before the meeting, he's got a revision to the plan that he can send us. And Luigi is just gonna update the drainage plan to make sure that it's consistent with, we're not, like, going back to revision two, it'll be revision four, so it'll still have the rain garden and everything the way that was proposed. But, and he can save a lot, like, maybe all of the drains with the new plan. And so it'll be consistent, we'll get the new plan, an updated drainage plan, and just a review. And I think that's pending the water line, as far as I know, all that's outstanding.
Mr. Leese, any comments or questions?
No, that's all correct.
So, so basically, we're waiting on a little bit more information from, from you than Mr. Leese, so we can get the TDE review?
Yeah, we're trying to move the garage, and make the garage a little bit smaller than the original plan was, I think it was plan number two. So this way, we save the extra tree, and there's one more tree we're trying to save. So we're gonna make the garage 24 by 24, which is a two car garage.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think, I think once everything's submitted, the review should be a pretty quick turnaround, I would expect. You know, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to rush it along, but, you know, I don't, two weeks is, what's, what, is it three weeks, Laura, we have for the next meeting? It's, um...
No, it's two. It's June 7th, because we had to move the meeting because of early voting, which then got canceled. But we do have it for June 7th.
So I don't think we can get that in, get the information in and get a review before the next meeting, is that?
The drainage, we probably could. Where the water line goes, I mean, that's really just how the water line gets handled. I don't know what the timeline is for that.
Alright, now I don't want to speak for Mr. McPartland, but is that something that we would condition? Or, you know, I don't kind of hurry with Mr. Leese, you're in, is it something we put on the back burner and wait for everything to come in for another couple of weeks, and maybe see if we're ready for a call for a resolution on June 7th? That meet your first timetable?
For me?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I think the water, I think the water line, we're just gonna go find the water line in Van Antwerp, which is in the right of way, and, and connect there and go up Van Antwerp on the other side of the street.
Alright. Alright, sounds like you just got some open items, and we'll get that done, and we're getting close to a final, you know, approval, not final approval. That's why we'll have to go forward, so. And elevation for the proposed homes, or if the homes are gonna be similar to what's recently built over there, we just need to get that, you know, fill in.
We're making some change, we're gonna put more windows on the side of the building that currently are on those homes currently. So we're getting those added in the next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, we just wanted to make sure we're not holding you up, and it sounds like...
Alright, understood.
That's good. Alright, alright, and we'll look forward to some more information and TDE review, and then based on comments, we're getting, we're getting close to final on, on this application, okay?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. McPartland, or questions for anyone? No? Okay. Alright, thank you, and good night, and we'll look forward to additional information on 1380 Van Antwerp Road. And that brings us off to the next project, Mr. Leese, 2147 Eastern Parkway. And that's Mr. Diarpino.
Okay, so the past couple of weeks, Mr. Leese has submitted a couple sketch plans with his architect, and we got a sneak peek at some of the renderings of the exterior. And tomorrow, we actually have an architectural review board meeting, where we're gonna be taking a look at the, at the sketches and the elevations that were sent over. My initial review comments is I, I like the direction that it's heading. It's a three-story structure that'll have masonry cladding on the ground floor level. Each of the ends will have exposed chimneys, fireplaces, and the corners all have large recessed porches with balconies that are, that are incorporated into each of the corners. And the, the first, the first couple elevations that we took a look at, they've broken up the facades by recessing things in and out, and there's a, oh, there you go, there's a gable ends that are on, on the end. If you go to the top picture, what we'll talk about tomorrow at the meeting is a little bit more work on the, on the center bay area, just to make it a little bit more pronounced where the entrance is. And then the roof lines, looking at the other elevation, looks like it has a hip on, on the end, which'll help expose a little bit more of the chimney. But, you know, the first pass going through is, I think, is a good start.
Okay. Thank you, David. And, you know, this, with this application, again, it's a special use permit, so we're gonna need to have a public hearing. We want to hold off until we get the first round of comments from the architectural review board. Because I believe for a public hearing, we're not gonna need any extensive engineering, basically, you know, the map of the, that we've already had a copy of. We're just looking for the sidewalks to be extended to the property line there. Maybe some clarification on the covered parking, along with those renderings for the elevations. We're probably getting pretty close to a public hearing if Mr. Leese, you know, wants to get, you know, again, go down that road. I don't know what your timetable is. Leese?
Um, I'm, I'm just wanna get through the architectural review committee, and then make those changes to the print, and add it to a mapping, put the sidewalks in, put the garages on, and then present that back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great, great. Yeah, so we get those comments, we get that back, and then, you know, again, you know, this is, this is a little bit, I don't wanna say it's a long process, but, you know, we have to have a public hearing notice, and then pass up the recommendation to town board, and, you know, another public hearing there. So if your schedule permits, then we'll, we'll, we'll look forward to getting the updates and hearing what the architectural review board has to say then.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Nope, I'm good.
Anything else, Mr. Diarpino?
I don't think so. I think it's a, it's a good start, and I went by the existing building this weekend, and I think it'll be a good improvement. One of the things we will have to take a look at is the, just the placement of the sidewalk, there is a bit of a grade change coming off Eastern Parkway. The site is now completely flat on, on the front end. But I think with, once it gets into the engineering portion of that, it'll be easy, easy to work through that. The sidewalks just along that one area that he's gonna be adding has a bit of a grade change. But no other observations on the site, other than that.
That's store district one, Niskuna, Mr. Leese, do you know?
I'm not sure, Kevin, what district it is.
Could be City of Schenectady too, possibly.
Could be the City of Schenectady, yeah.
That's an engineering detail we'll have to work out when we get there.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further at this point in time for 2147 Eastern Parkway? Any other comments, questions? Alright, alright, well then we'll close the discussion on 2147 Eastern Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, have a good night.
Kevin, just so no one's confused, I just double-checked the calendar, the ARB meeting's for Wednesday. So, and we'll send out a link, and to you as well, Lou.
That's Wednesday, the 26th?
Oh, it's this week, Wednesday, sorry.
Yeah. I was like, tomorrow, it's Wednesday.
You know, Wednesday morning.
And that's, is that a virtual meeting?
Yes, that's virtual, yep.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have, I'll make sure, yep, 3410 State Street, and that's a site plan application for the addition of upstate guns and ammo. And I see we have the applicant online, and again, I believe it's Mr. Diarpino. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, so recently, Mr. Seraphini has been working on updating his packet, and he did include updates to the narrative that talked specifically about the setbacks, exactly what they were looking to do as far as putting the addition on the back of the building. Brief explanation of the dual use, and how much of the inside space is gonna be allocated for the, the car sales portion, and then some floor plans were included that showed a basic layout of the inside of the store. There was a summary, I believe the planning department put together, that listed all of the existing variances and the items that he will be going for the final application process to get resolved. Of those, besides the setbacks, are also the parking requirements with the increased footprint of the building. There will need to be 14 spaces, and it looks like he will be short a couple on those. So again, it's, it's, I believe it's a total of, it'll be a total of six items that will be going to the zoning board in order for him to get final approval.
Yeah, I was talking to Mr. Henry today, kind of going through some things. You know, obviously, for this site, the, the most restrictive use is the automotive sales. So really, all the variances, area variances are based on the automotive sales. Doesn't make a difference how much of a split of the property is, it's just the more limiting, which is the automotive sales. There was an updated drawing submitted that showed the 14, 14 parking spaces. It looks like the addition, maybe Mr. Seraphini can confirm this, the addition was 13.
The addition was 1393, um, the increase in, uh, uh, square footage.
Actually, um, Matt Hoffman's on with us and Matt's the, uh, the engineer that is working on this for me. So I'm going to let him address that.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The building, we're going to go as wide as the existing building. The existing building is, uh, it's, is an odd dimension. It, it's not, uh, you know, 35 feet or 36 feet. It, it's 3510. And we're proposing 40 feet in length. So that's why we get the, uh, odd dimension of 1393. But that is the proposed addition. Um, we do show the 14 parking spots, uh, one of which will be handicap, uh, a proposed handicap spot. And two of those 14 right now are proposed to be automotive display, um, which is why we would need the variance of two. Uh, because we would have 12 open spots for employees and the public. However, if that variance isn't granted, you know, we, we still, we do need 14 spots.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. That, that helps clarify, uh, for me, get my understanding. The, um, the handicap space, it, you know, it's not marked on this, uh, drawing that Laura's pulled up. I believe is it number one?
Well, it, it, we don't, again, this is just concept. It's probably going to be number one. It's closest to the door, but we may move things around. Uh, once we get to the, you know, cons, uh, beyond concept plan and actual design plans. When we figure out how we're going to make the building handicap comply, ADA compliant, which most likely at this point is going to be a exterior lift system instead of a ramp, uh, based on site constraints.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was the interesting thing, uh, the old versus new layout is that, uh, you know, the 14 parking spots are required. And, uh, um, you know, you're obviously losing a lot of display area, um, by putting the, uh, addition in. Uh, and two, two cars for display is going to work for you?
Yeah, basically it allows me to, for lack of a better way to phrase it, entertain my passion, which is the car sales. I don't need to do a lot of car sales. My, my primary, you know, source of income is the gun sales at this point, but I've been doing the car sales for so long. I enjoy it. Uh, you know, I feel like I've kept part of a business that's been in this unit since the 60s alive with it. And, you know, having two display spaces will more than adequately cover what I need for that.
All right. And, uh, so the other thing I, I think we need, we need, uh, I was talking to Mr. Henry today, is the, uh, the drawing that, um, you know, it's kind of busy. Uh, all we, what, uh, what the planning office, uh, needs for the code enforcement officer, uh, is to make sure to clear the setbacks versus the automotive setback, which is the requirement, right? The most restrictive. Make sure we got it correct. So the denial letter can be prepared correctly so that we can, uh, make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals.
So, the, those setbacks are shown on the plan. Um, if you go back to the plan that you just had up, they were labeled and called out. Uh, I left both setbacks on because obviously i- if the planning department or, uh, zoning isn't going to give us variances, uh, I would think they would want to see where the setbacks for the retail is on the plan. And we can then show the variances are obviously going to change. That's why both sets of setbacks are shown currently.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't see, I don't see an arrow on the, um, Albany Street side showing the minimum, uh, distance that comes up with the, uh, number required for the variance.
It, it's right there. It, you see, um, there's the dimension line, uh, right from the D under existing building. There's the dimension of what your setback requirement would be.
Okay, the requirement, but what's the actual proposal? That they, they can do the denial based on the, the layout. Is that on there?
It's in the narrative. I mean, big, it's that minus 50. So, it's, and it's all in the narrative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's down below, it talks about all the variances requested.
All right.
So there's existing 11 foot variance right now. We are going to be needing a new 46 foot variance. So we would be requesting an additional 30 foot, 35 foot variance.
All right. We just got to make sure that the, uh, you know, again, the code enforcement, uh, it's clear so that they can write an accurate denial letter so we can take action on it. And their agreement, I'm, I'm trying to pull up on my, my screen, uh, zoom it a little bit better because it's hard to see, uh, the one that gets displayed for the public here.
Yeah, I guess like Clark and I are just, that's just confusing.
Yeah.
Us, because like it looks to us like the corner of the proposed building is probably like four feet away maybe from the property line. That's just an estimate. That's really the number we're looking for, like where this corner is to the lot line.
Okay. Why did, what, what, that doesn't really go into effect though of anything. That, that, that dimension isn't really relevant. Um, the, the setback dimension is the relevant dimension, isn't it? So, you know, you, you go to your property line, you offset 50 feet for the setback, and then you pull your dimension 50 feet to the building face. And that's going to give you your, uh, variance that's requested, correct?
Uh, I mean, I guess you could do it that way. That, I've never seen it that way. And we would definitely want the dimension labeled, but.
Yeah, if that's, if you, if you want the dimension from the property line instead of the setback, that's fine.
Yeah. It sounds like, it sounds like you're saying 50 feet anyway, right? Cause you're doing 56 minus 46, 50 minus 46?
Yeah, correct.
But yeah, we would use the four feet there. That's what we would use.
Okay. We can do that.
Yep. That's always looking for. So it's just clear. Um, and then the, uh, again, the denial can be updated with the request for, uh, the loss of two parking spaces due to automotive display. And then we have something, uh, that's firm. Um, and, you know, uh, that we can act on.
So you want those two spaces hatched out? Is that what you want?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be, it'd be helpful.
Okay.
Yep.
Could, could we just go back to the, to the setback? Is, is he exacerbating the, the distance based on what the current variance is? Does that number have to be fact, factored in?
He's currently got, uh, the town currently gave Mr. Seraphini, uh, 11 foot variance off of the 50 foot variance for automotive sales. We are now asking, the new building is going to be 40, 46 feet. So there's a difference, 46 minus 11, there would be an additional 35 foot variance requested.
Right. So the numbers that were highlighted in the denial letter are relatively close to what you're asking, correct?
I haven't seen the denial letter, so I can't answer that.
Draft of it.
Yeah, it's only a draft. So that's why I wanted to make sure it was clear. So the planning office can do a formal denying, denial letter that we can act on. And obviously, you know, it's pretty important for the applicant that when we make the recommendation to go to ZBA that got it right. So that, uh, we're not doing any rework for ourselves or the applicant.
Um, because you're, you're, it, the variance is off of the old variance. It's not off of the proposed setback, correct?
Yeah, there's already some variance granted, correct? Correct.
So the number that you guys are looking for is 35 feet. It sounds like. But it will be shown, we'll put dimensions off the face of the building to the property line.
Exactly. And that'll, that'll help, you know, prepare the denial letter. If we have that, I believe everybody's good. We should be able to, Dave, right next meeting, um, you know, make our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And that would put you on the July, um, agenda, right, Laura? July?
Yes, that's correct.
And then that would, uh, based on their, uh, uh, you know, action in July, would come back to the board. And we, we in much better shape to move this forward to try to meet the commitment, which I believe was somewhere around September to try to, to drive this project home, you know, based on the container being there and all that stuff, right? So we want to keep it moving.
Absolutely. And I, obviously as we get close, I hope that, you know, if we are, you know, getting fringy on time, you know, the board might be able to look at that and, you know, see where we are, say, okay, we need another month or whatnot. You know, just because frankly, I'm getting nervous with, you know, timeframes to get there. Hopefully the board will continue to work with us if we're right at the edge.
Well, the next action is if you submit the updated drawing, the planning office will, will do the denial letter and we'll have the denial ready. You know, as soon as you resubmit, we'll have the denial letter for the next meeting. We'll take action and then it'll be, you know, up to the zoning board of appeals. And then based on the outcome there, we'll keep it moving, you know?
Okay. And I, I don't see any reason why we can't have that to you in the, the next few days with just, uh, the updated, uh, you know, um, markings on the drawing.
Are there any other changes that you guys want besides that threshold dimension and the hat two spots hatched out and labeled as automotive display?
I'm not aware of anything. Uh, Mr. Henry, is there anything that you're aware of?
No, the only other thing I'd like to go over and Laura, you and I can double check is when I looked at our records, I showed a 10 foot variance to the west.
Um, That, that's correct. It, you, it was 10 foot, but based on the survey, uh, which, uh, Mr. Seraphini had by, uh, insight northeast, it's 11 feet. It, 10 feet is incorrect.
So 11 feet is what you need and 10 feet was granted or vice versa?
Yeah. 10 feet is what was granted, but it, it really is in actuality 11 feet.
All right. So we need an additional, we need to take that in consideration with the next action and to rectify that.
Yeah. So I think ba- based on the things we've learned at this meeting, we can square away and finalize these dimensions for the denial letter. You know, tomorrow we'll, we'll call Matt and Craig and wrap that up.
Okay. Okay. Good. And based on that little bit of conversation, I think that means we're going to actually change our variance request from 35 to 36 feet. And that should equate for the, the one foot that, you know, when the survey was done, we discovered was off or whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the best legal way to do that.
Okay. Yeah, that, that seems like a good solution. That way, you know, assuming that it gets approved going forward, there's no questions that the correct footage was identified.
Great. All right. All right. Yeah, that's where we're at. David, anything else?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
All right. So you still like to update, uh, showing the, uh, uh, actual, uh, footage? And, uh, update the dial letter. Let's say we got that, uh, within the next two weeks, we'll have it all squared away for the next meeting to make the recommendation to the ZBA. All right.
Perfect. Then I will talk to, uh, Clark and Laura tomorrow and we'll make sure we have everything on track for you.
Great. All right. Any other questions at all on this project from the board or anybody? No? All right. Then we'll close the discussion on 3410 State, State Street. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. All right. Next we have is, let's see, is, I gotta get the right agenda here. Uh, uh, 428 Balltown Road, and that's the target remodel, the staging area. Mr. Uh, Oster has agreed to be project lead. And I think, do we have anybody representing Target online tonight?
Darlene and myself are on.
Okay. Ms. Darlene, uh, uh, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Um, so, I mean, uh, basically we've got the drawing for the reconfiguration or, you know, for the, to support the remodel and everything. And, and that's what the discussion item is on tonight. Um, you know, are we, are we in good shape? I mean, the only thing I can think of personally is that, uh, do we need to have, uh, Laura fire or police just take a look at to make sure there's no concerns from a circulation standpoint, from safety aspect?
Yeah, we would definitely refer it to them, um, in between now and final site plan. Um, but it is really similar to what was approved before, but we would definitely refer it to them.
It, it's the same, it's the same lo- location, the same, taking up the same amount of parking spots and.
I don't know the answer.
I recall when we did this last time, we did ask them to move it off center. So it was kind of like at the edge of the target area and as opposed to more in front of it. So that's what it looks like kind of this time. But I know it's like, it looked like, I mean, again, I was just doing the math and trying to count the spots and it's, I don't know, 17 times eight, the number of spot, spots are being taken up. What's that? 136 or something like that? My math is correct?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know.
There's plenty of parking there. So it's not like it's, it's, but it's just, just in terms of just trying to un- understand that, you know, the, like the, the level of the footprint and whether that was the exact same thing that they had done last time.
The landlord had mentioned that it was very similar and we did send approval over from the landlord of the building and they were, they were okay with it.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to be pretty straightforward to me, uh, at least this portion of it. Uh, and how long, uh, was the remodel, estimated time?
It's supposed to be three weeks, but because of some permitting potential delays and everything, we're saying a max of four months now. But again, with the holidays coming, yeah, they're going to want us out of there and fast tracked. So.
Yeah, that's true. It's one thing that drives the process, right? And make some sales. So we got, get to free up the space. So.
And just to reiterate, um, Darlene and I have, have updated, um, there is no alt of beauty because of the proximity of the other one. So with this particular remodel, unlike some of the others we're doing, because of that close proximity, there is not an alt of beauty going in. Most 90 some percent of the work is back of house. Um, and, and the staging needs to happen earlier than the actual remodel. So they can clear out some of those areas where they hold overstock and racks and stuff like that for, for the particular store.
Right.
Laura, did we have any complaints from last time when it, when it, when they did this?
Um, I don't remember anything that was epic. Um, there may have been some grumblings, but I just, to my memory, there wasn't any formal, uh, big deal about it. I'm trying to find the other one really quickly, but so far I haven't been able to locate it. I'm looking for it.
Yeah, I mean, I recall generally, like I said, I think they had, they had moved at our request, they had moved it kind of more off towards
I remember that.
of the lot. And it looks like that's kind of what they're trying to do here too. Um, but I'm just curious whether it was that large of a footprint last time.
There were grumblings.
What's that?
There were grumblings, including from nearby stores. Uh, it was believed that staging actually deterred people from visiting other stores as well.
Well, they have the landlord's approval, right? So, I mean, yeah, there's, there's going to be impact. I mean, um, but it sounds like, uh, you know, they'll strive for a quick turnaround because it's to their benefit, of course. So. All right. Well.
I guess there's only question is that when they do the fencing, is there anything they do to make it look less, less like, you know, foreboding? Like, you know, it's, I, I don't, I don't know if there's any, you know, any way, shape or form you could do that.
Well, again, I mean, we're trying to utilize the Conex, which is a solid picture as opposed to a bunch of chain link fence.
Yeah.
And we are, we are, we have Target. We had a meeting with Target last week. There's banners that go up. Pardon our appearance. And, you know, we're working for your benefit as quick as possible. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
All right. So Laura, I guess I'll, I'll defer to the planning office at this point in time. I mean, again, it seems to be straightforward. We can, you know, we can just pass it by, fire, please, just to, you know, make sure we've, um, had them look at it in case there's no, and we've done this before. So I, I don't think there'll be any concerns. Are, are we ready for a resolution so they can move forward?
Oops. Oh, I'm not even muted. Yeah, we can, we can definitely prepare a tentative one. We'll run it past fire, police, engineering, our normals. And then, um, just for, for consistency sake, I still can't, I still haven't been able to find it. But we'll find the old one and just compare it and see if it's similar to this too.
Right. And we'll look for any conditions that may have been in the old one that would apply, uh, again, here. That wouldn't be any surprising. We have that posted. So you'll, the applicant would be able to look at it before we take action. Um, which would be on the, uh, June, was it June 7th meeting, which is the next meeting?
Yeah.
June 7th.
So tentative final, but with that information.
Yep. That sound reasonable to the applicant? June 7th? Yep. Does that sound reasonable to the applicant, June 7th?
Yes, it does.
Okay, Darlene, you're good too?
Yes.
All right, all right, so all right, we'll have a tentative resolution, um, approving the, uh, the remodel staging area, uh, for Target, uh, across, uh, at Mohawk Commons, uh, for the next, uh, planning board meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all or comments on this subject? No? Okay, thank you and, uh, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Have a good one, wait, thank you.
Right. All right, and that brings us to reports. And under reports, make sure I got, yep, is, uh, first up, we have the historic preservation town code. And I guess I could let Laura or Clark kick it off on that.
Uh, it's really a Dave and Dennis.
Dave and Dennis?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did see Dave's comments. Thanks, Dave. Um, I, I did take a look at it and you caught the same things that I was gonna send to, uh, Dr. Brennan, so it looked good to me. Because only one additional thing is, um, under definitions of, when you change planning board to planning board and zoning commission, we just need to update that. Uh, under definitions, planning board and zoning commission for the town of Niskuna on that. That would be the only comment that I had. Uh, so thank you, uh, Mr. Diopino for doing that. Um, and if Dr. Brennan has received those comments, we just do that one update. I guess the real question is what, you know, what's next? Is, is it sufficient? That's one thing, I looked at it, to me, you know, I'm not the expert in this area about, you know, having a, a good, uh, uh, policy that could help minimize any future problems. So I, I, it kind of left me with the question, is it, you know, is it good enough? I mean, I, I appreciate everybody's work on it, um, and the, and the committee and everything. Uh, does it do everything we need to, to do? And I don't know the answer to that, so I'm just kind of posing that question. Um, I don't know who the expert would be. I don't know if that's the planning office, you know, feels that it's got everything in there that needs to be in there or whether there's additional things that are missing or not.
It's, so, when we looked at historic codes before, there's a couple ways to do them. One is, like, I think the Clifton Park version is that they have kind of like a carrot, which allows you to put a de-discretion on the property for 50 years that it's going to remain historic and then you get a tax break. Um, and then there's like, kind of the more like, uh, restrictive one, which maybe some people are aware of and not everybody likes, but some people like it a lot, like, you know, that there's a, a true historic commission that reviews anything, you know, kind of like pu-, putting a historic district over the entire town of Niskuna, and if a house is designated as historic, they can't do anything on it until it gets approval from a commission. Um, and actually, this code doesn't have either of those things. But they're both, I think, can be added down the road. I would say that as far as does it go far enough, it's definitely a good beginning. There's a couple of things in here that are really critical. One of them is that the historic commission would be required to look at the demolishment of any home that's over 50 years old. So, um, that'd be really helpful. As I think I've said to you guys before, I have absolutely no ability to not issue a building permit to somebody who wants to take down a historic home, provided that they do an asbestos survey and they have a, a, all the insurance necessary to take out a building permit. I mean, there's, there's nothing. They can take down any building that they want in the town of Niskuna. And so that's there, and I think that's really important. And laying out the historic commission is in the code and also designating, um, I think one of the things that we had ran in, run into is that we, you know, we have a limited, in our comprehensive plan, it's a very limited reference to historic structures. I think it was only, everything was on the national register. And so we don't really have a great way of listing historic structures, and this gives us a way to list historic structures. Um, you could add into it later to do a tax incentive if the town board was still willing or to do, um, you know, more restrictions on historic properties. But right now, it gives us a list, so the planning board can actually say, yeah, you know, this, this home is recognized by the town of Niskuna formally as a historic home. And then also that you can't just demolish them, I think. And it gives, um, like, it gives a list of things for the historic commission to do. So that's kind of the things that are happening with this code.
So the planning office is comfortable, um, pretty much with the, the comments that they've had so far from Mr. Diopino? Because, I mean, uh, we're, you know, we're looking here just to help out. Do we, uh, do we ma- do we send, have a resolution and do we, uh, pass this on, uh, to the town board in the form of a resolution recommending that they adopt it? Or do we, is it informal and we just pass it on to town board because they'll have to have a public hearing, right?
Yeah, they're required to have a public hearing because I believe it's its own chapter or we're thinking about it being its own chapter. Um, that's one of the things I guess we have to decide. So if we were to add it into the zoning code, we, we have to open up Seeker and we have to do our own public hearings and recommendations to the town board. If historic preservation stands alone as its own code, um, I think we could just do the recommendation to the, um, town board, although it's never a bad thing to call for a public hearing. Um, we could definitely do like a preliminary public hearing and kind of get it out there as much as we could to gather comments from people to see if there was a lot of support for it. Um, or we could get it to a really good place and then send it to the town board for them to call a public hearing on it. Um, but definitely, we would do a formal recommendation to the town board to adopt it. I think it probably makes the own senses, it's its own sense as a standalone chap- chapter. But I, you know, I like public hearings.
Yeah, listening to what you had to say with the, the benefit of the public hearing, like you said, is a good filter, uh, to, uh, make sure we didn't miss anything and, uh, that's, you know, it's critical. Instead of waiting for the town board to have it, and then we can send a cleaner, um, cleaner document, I guess, to the town board, um, if we go ahead and have a public hearing ourselves. Is that what you're saying, Laura? Planning board have a public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my recommendation. I think it's a, I mean, it's not that the town board, you know, but it's almost better to have it early on in the process, vet through a lot of that stuff so that the public hearing at the town board, you know, maybe has some minor things, but we've already vetted any major problems with the code, the public, prior to passing it on.
So when do you think we'd be ready? When would you like to do that?
Um, you know, we have, so we actually, so, so, sorry. So we're not actually calling for a public hearing for 1380 Van Antwerp because we want to wait and see what's going on with the water line, right? So we, they would, oh, no, we don't need that one. What was the one that maybe had a public hearing?
Um, I'm not sure of any.
Oh, Eastern, Eastern.
Oh, Eas- Eastern, that's right.
But he wanted to go to the ARB first, sorry. They're right underneath, so, he would go to the ARB on Wednesday and then come back to us June 7th, and then we'd probably call for a public hearing on June 24th. So we don't, so, sorry, I'm just logistically figuring it out. It would be better for me if we didn't call the public, for the public hearing until June 24th. That would be my preference.
All right, then why don't we, um, and it's okay, Mr. Diopino, why don't we just, um, you know, get the, uh, make sure Mr. Brennan, uh, Dr. Brennan has the latest update? We just got one clarification on the planning board and zoning commission. And, um, and then we'll, uh, next meeting, we can call for, uh, call for a public hearing for the 24th. Let's go on and call for it now. We want to establish that already. Do we, we don't need, do we need a resolution to call for a public hearing or just?
We can just call for it.
Yeah. All right, is, is everybody, so we, so we don't have to bring it up at the next meeting? Are we okay for the 24th for a public hearing on historic preservation code? See a thumbs up there?
I think it's a great idea.
All right. That sounds reasonable.
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor where we are with this, with this code and what it's set to accomplish. Like Laura had said, we're not putting a very restrictive code into place. Um, there are neighborhoods that probably have a concentration of more historic homes and historic sites. And I think this just gives us the opportunity to enhance that, and then when the next comprehensive plan goes into effect, I think this committee will be an essential part of that to add information so that we can really get a good catalog of what we have in the town over the next couple of years.
Great. Okay, all right, so we'll have, um, a, uh, public hearing on June 20th, 24th, right, Laura? On the historic preservation code proposal.
Yes, that, that works the best for us. That's also probably going to be our first in-person meeting, which may help more people attend as well.
Right. And if we have to, we can also discuss, uh, any concerns at, uh, the committee, uh, Economic Development Historic Preservation Committee, uh, our next meeting, which is probably a week or two away, right, so we can bring it up there also and see just any comments, right? Anything else on this, uh, subject right now? No? All right. Okay, so we're all set on the historic preservation? And then next up is a new item, and I believe Laura or Clark, you want to talk about this, Target pickup lanes?
Yeah, Clark, can you just talk about what you've been talking to Target about for that?
Sure, could you pull up that one drawing?
Yeah.
Do we have anybody, um, applicant online for this one?
No, we don't. This is, this is just a report. I think they just wanted to give a little heads up. Um, it's too early to really, there's no site plan or anything like that for it. But because, because they're seeing such an increase in people ordering things for pickup, um, basically from the pandemic, they're concerned about having their delivery people, um, run out into the parking lot to deliver goods to people who have pulled up for a delivery. So they want to make a dedicated area to where parking spaces are set aside specifically for pickup and they have a safer, um, method for people to deliver the goods out to vehicles in these spots. So we did bounce it off of the other two folks from Target. It's a completely independent project and we wanted to make sure that they're not both talking about the same parking lot space, which they say they are not. Um, um, Peter may be able to speak to that. And the, the other project is still kind of early on, so, but we do have a sketch of it.
Yeah, we, we stayed on. I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Good evening again, everyone. Darlene and I are still on.
Okay, great, great. So Peter, maybe you or Darlene could just confirm that this is not the same parking lot area space that you would have your staging area?
The, the areas are separated and again, the projects are going to be done in sequence where they're not going to affect one another.
Okay, great. So, Clark, was there a timetable for their submission? Have they made application?
They haven't made an application yet, but I think that, you know, they want to move along, so. Laura, it might even be in the, in the folders for the next planning board meeting?
Yeah, I know I saw it. Like, I literally just saw it. And I'm having a hard time finding it.
They, they will have some signage from the, the sketch they provided. You know, they would have some signage labeling these parking spots as, um, for, for pickup.
Yep.
Basically for pickup.
No, that, that sounds reasonable and if you recall.
I would think we might even have an application by the next planning board meeting. We might have some site plan information.
If you rec- if you recall, when, uh, we had this discussion about the pickup before, that was one of the comments that the board had, was that we were concerned about safety of, of the employees to bringing things out, so. Um, I'm glad to see that, uh, they're looking to improve that, so that's good. All right, so we'll look forward to have an application and we'll start the review as soon as we get it in and probably at our next meeting on the, uh, um, June 7th, if we have everything we need to get, start talking about it, okay? Anything else on that subject, Clark?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, when I find it, I'll email it to you guys. I, I, I had it, but I can't find it anymore.
Okay, Laura, that's okay. All right, and last thing under reports was just, uh, the COVID-19 update. Sounds like we're getting close to seeing each other in person again.
Yeah, um, we just, um, so I think June 7th, we're still allowed to have a virtual meeting and just logistically, especially for me. Like, I really still need that one to be virtual. But as far as we know, the, the governor may, um, right now, the virtual meetings only go to June 16th or 19th. Um, so we may even be required to have the se- the second June meeting to be in person. But even if we're not, um, we think that we'll probably, we'll be ready. So the town board's been working on it. Um, you know, the only thing that we're still trying to work out is the hybrid. If there's somebody who's uncomfortable coming in person, like, how can they participate in the meeting in person? Even if it's just through like a telephone at this point. Um, so, um, we're still just working on that hybridity, but I, I feel like for the most part, as far as I know, unless you guys want to send me a, you know, a separate email, I think most people are comfortable coming into person now, um, to in-person. Um, we'll still have a check-in station. You'll still have, you'll still have to fill out a questionnaire to come. Um, so you might have to arrive earlier, but we'll send you all of the stuff for the in-person meetings when we get, when we get closer, but so June 7th virtual, June 24th in-person.
Well, the, uh, the town board, now they have a meet tomorrow night, that's in-person, I assume?
Yes, yeah, they've had their last couple of meetings in-person.
Now, are they doing the hybrid, uh, so that people could call in and participate in the meeting or login, or is it strictly, uh, in-person meeting only?
Um, I think it's actually just in-person right now. I could be wrong about tomorrow because I know it's something that they've been working on, but at least for the agenda meeting, to my understanding, um, that was in-person only.
But they'll still be recorded and streamed live though, is that correct?
Yes, but like for those of you who are used to watch, you know, clicking on the Google Meets Live, when it's in-person only, you, you go to the YouTube link, are the town of Niskuna's YouTube? It's been a long time. But when, but when, but when they're in-person and you're using the equipment that's in the back of the room, it's livestreamed with YouTube, so you just go to the town of Niskuna's YouTube site and it just pops up whatever's livestreaming at the time.
Without having to put in the, um, Niska 1230.
Yeah, there's no password or anything. You just have to be linked to the town of Niskuna's YouTube channel. That's how it used to work before we did, before we did Google Meets, but it's been a long time. I'm like, where are these meetings?
Yeah, it sounds like just getting back into the groove again is a, is a thing here, huh? Yeah, that'd be great to, to see everybody. All right, so the next meeting on June 7th will be, uh, uh, remote software again, uh, with the goal of, uh, the 24th of, uh, June, uh, to have our public hearings and to, um, be back in person at this point in time.
And if anybody needs any special accommodations, I say this all the time, but just email me. Um, I, I, we can accommodate whatever you need for.
Yeah, I think the only other thing we need to work out again is, uh, you know, we're trying to minimize paper, since that was a good thing for the planning office, having to put together paper packets. So it'll be up to each, uh, board member to, to, uh, uh, figure out how they want to, you know, handle the material, whether they print certain things that they want from the packet or whether they bring in a, a device, a tablet, your phone, whatever they're going to work from in the meeting. Um, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do, but, uh, we'll figure it out. You'll still be able to pull things up on the screen, Laura, during the meeting?
So that's something that Clark keeps asking. We really do want to have that capability. Um, and I know that we're, we're, we're not fully there yet, but it would be great if like we could just have tablets that you sit down, um, when you get to the meeting and you can pull up the packets on or something. Um, although we don't have that, if you guys have the capability of bringing in a device so that we don't have to print the paper packets, um, that would be really great and a time saver to us. Um, but we do want to work on, like, what we were thinking is I could have my computer plugged in somehow to the projector so that, yeah. The thing about it is, and I don't know if you guys remember, like, when you plug into the projector, like, the person in the video area, like, has to zoom in on the projector. So when you, when we project things, it's not like Google Meets where it just pops right up on the screen to people who are watching the video. They use a camera that then looks down on, at a funny angle, really, which projected onto the projector.
Yeah, onto the screen, right? You have to look at the screen, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it'd be, uh, important too for any applicants that want to, you know, show us things, you know, whether they're gonna have to bring in their laptop and, and, uh, plug into something or whether they gotta bring a projector in, you know? So all those details need to be ironed out for, uh, public hearings also. Uh, although, otherwise, somebody's gotta print, uh, a map again and we'll have to put it on the tripod and then the, uh, the camera will have to zoom in on that. Um, but, you know, it's, that's, that's the hard part, you know? I think that's the hard part because it's hard to see that stuff, you know?
I think it's an advantage to Google Meets. There are some advantages to Google Meets.
And, and again, that's a, that's a screen, so we're using a projector. It'd be nice if we had like, uh, you know, 80 or 90 or 100-inch, uh, flat panel TV up there that you could just, you know, uh, cast your, your screen to. That would be ideal situation, but put that on the list, huh?
That was, I think Clark's, Clark also had that idea. I think that would work fantastically. You know, and then if you could somehow also link that into the, you know, the live stream so that when you live, you know, but I don't know how to do any of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we should be able to cast to a screen if we, if we had, you know, a monitor up there at least, you know? All right, anything else, Laura, on, uh, COVID-19 updates?
No, but if you guys have any thoughts on that, please send them to me because we definitely really would like to lessen, um, the paper and have it be a little bit more transparent to the public what we're looking at and try and do things as much electronically as we can. So if you have any experiences, email Clark and I.
Yeah, the one thing, I think I mentioned this before, it's, it seems even, you know, my computer's not that slow, but it seems when I pull up the packet, you know, there's a lot of loading time, so you're in a meeting, it's difficult. I know you talked one time about having some meeting software that would break each project up into its own like tab so you don't have to load everything. I know you talked one time about having some meeting software that would break each project up into its own like tab, so you don't have to load everything to go through, you know, each map. If there's any way we could break things up so that, uh, you know, it could reduce the, uh, the time to load documents or maps and things, that would be very helpful.
How's the Wi-Fi at Town Hall?
Uh, I don't know if it's any better than it used to be, it's marginal.
Well, no, as I'm saying, that's as much for those, like, you know, I'm just thinking I'd bring my laptop, but I, you know, it's all somewhat dependent upon how good the, the Wi-Fi is operating.
Yeah, so let, maybe Clark and I contest that, because I would bring my laptop as well, um.
Yeah, think about it, if we all do, you know, uh, there's, uh, you know, nine, ten, eleven of us, right? Counting the alternates and the, and the town employees, right, in the planning office.
Well, you can download the packet so that you're not pulling it off the Wi-Fi, right? It'll actually load a lot quicker if you download it to your hard drive on your device. That's what I do for when I'm sharing my screen with you guys, like, I don't stream it off of the, um, like, uh, Internet Explorer. I, um, download it as a PDF and then open it up in a PDF viewer.
That's a good suggestion. Okay, well, we'll, we'll figure it out and we'll get there, right? All right, anything else, Laura, COVID-nineteen?
Uh, nope, I did, I did notice, and maybe you noticed this as well, Chairman, that the applicant owner for Fillmore signed on late and he's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, Mr. Martel, uh, thanks for joining in. Uh, I try to recall where we're at, I think, uh, we basically talked to, uh, your engineer was online, correct? And, uh, we were gonna have a resolution for the next meeting, is that where we ended up? I'd have to go back to my notes here because I'm starting to lose.
Yeah, we called for the frame.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So call for a resolution, and, uh, whether or not the, uh, land transfer has been, uh, uh, executed or not, we would, you know, we had to, we would condition it in the resolution to make sure it's covered, so, uh, we'll have a resolution at the June seventh, uh, meeting, uh, granting approval of the, for the reconfiguration of those lots.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Martel, thank you.
And Clark, Henry, thank you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Good to see you.
All right, I guess I'll just, to keep it brief, instead of going down the line, just ask anybody again whether they have any commission business or questions for the planning office that they'd like to talk about. I'll open the floor, how's that? Anybody?
Uh, I reiterated a question from a couple of weeks, a couple of minutes ago. I'm under the impression I have enough, enough excess credits, some previous trainings, I don't need any this year, but I'd like to know that for sure. Plus, I haven't seen any new training offered lately, do I miss anything?
Yeah, all the trainings have been virtual that I've seen. I know there's a couple requests from zoning and planning board members to do in-person training, but I haven't seen any offerings for in-person training. My guess is they'll probably come out in the fall, um, because that's typically when there's the other big in-person training, if they're ready to do it that way. Um, I will see if I can pull up that training, um, sheet and send it to you, Leslie. I probably won't be able to do that before the next planning board meeting. I am on vacation, really, almost, from tomorrow into the next planning board meeting. But I will write it down and make sure that we get that information to you as soon as we can.
All right, I mean, there's webinars, there's webinars that have been, you know, uh, I've done distribution, received notifications for webinars for different subjects that you can register for, um, you know, but, yeah, that's on the computer, computer-based training. And again, if you go to the New York State Department of State, uh, there's presentations there, uh, several that, uh, you can, uh, download, you can review, and there's a, a test, and you can print, and you can send it into the planning office. Uh, and there's, there's not a lot of them, but there's several, that's how I did my training last year, I was able to utilize that site, New York State Department of State. Um, there's some training packages there, all right? But I always, I look forward to, uh, hopefully having something in, in person. I always enjoy the Hudson Valley Annual Training, which hopefully maybe we'll have this fall, that's always a good one.
I love the stereotype of the one.
Yeah, you always get to see a lot of other people that you run into, uh, other planning and zoning boards that you see at those trainings, so it's nice to be able to talk to people, so. All right, any other comments or questions for the planning office? I have nothing. All right, seeing no one else, uh, have a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned by Mr. Khan, and, uh, that'll be seconded by Mr. Oster. All's in favor in German, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, hearing no one opposed, we'll adjourn, uh, the, the meeting at, uh, eight-thirty, eight PM. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and, uh, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Chairman Walsh, Lauren Clark, have a good evening, bye-bye.
Thank you.